Okay, roll call. We are minus one. Board member Ferris, who is Chair of policy, is on a much deserved location. A notification of a meeting, you would probably have noticed, thank you Kate and Laura. Our first discussion and action item is discussion and action to allow for remote participation and voting by board member Chris Ferris at tonight's school board meeting. This arises out of Arrowhead not having a policy, procedure around this particular action as well. We do have a great deal of precedent that's been set with regards to level of participation for several years, and now in committee, every committee, we tend to typically have a few members who participate remotely every single month. So we did consult with Leo briefly on this, and he suggested that due to the precedent, we bring it forward this way to allow the possibility of board member and policy chair Chris Ferris to be able to participate tonight. He has made himself available remotely pending the vote. And given that he had the history and the development of the policy itself, I thought his presence would be something that the board should consider. So given that, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve board member Ferris's full participation at the meeting this evening. Is there any further discussion by your board?
What's the thought going forward? Is this a person by person, one off every time we're gonna have an empty member, or are we gonna have a policy that's all incumbent on all?
Thank you, number one. The point would be for, this is a one off, one time only for tonight. That said, I think, given that this is happening, it might be something that the board would like to pursue the policy and certainly slate it to a policy discussion with policy committee to see if there is the desire to have policy lines for members of the board.
Yeah, I would like to recommend that we take that to policy to develop. And it's becoming quite challenging to always attend things in person, travel and other obligations outside of this commitment. So I think looking at that as an option, it's also the way a lot of the world is moving as well with remote work and other items that even our US legislature meets remotely as well. So let's take that into consideration for the future potential policy that we have representation.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to the vote. All members in favor of approval of member Ferris's participation, you think, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe that we have Chris Ferris LinkedIn right now, and we will be participating for the remainder of this time that he's on board with us. So our next our next item up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Oftentimes, the superintendent report is very little important to superintendents. I like to bring in students, I like to bring in staff members to help the board and community see all the fabulous things that happen within our school. Since this is my last school board meeting, I thank you for the opportunity to spend five or 10 minutes on two different topics, mainly to give you a transition update and also a few comments of farewell. So for mainly the sake of the board, as you know, Conrad Farner will start his superintendence on August 1st. While my last official day is August 7th, I'll use a vacation day on that Monday, and so my last day will be August 4th, Friday. This allows for four full days of transition meeting time between Conrad and myself. And you know, this is in addition to Conrad, and I've already met a couple of times. So we're well underway with a smooth transition. I want the board to feel secure that all of my electronic files, paper files, all of the important things will be transferred to Conrad. I don't really care to bring all of that home. And certainly I'll be reviewing our district processes with him as well as updating Conrad on current initiatives that are underway, personnel matters, all of those important topics. Plus, we know our fabulous administrative team is here, who will of course support Conrad as he onboards into Arrowhead High School. Also be confident that major July and early August annual projects are already done or almost completed. So Conrad can work on establishing relationships when he gets here August 1st rather than working on a lot of policy reports. For example, some of the end of year and beginning of year school year tasks and reports for the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction are done. Those aren't real fun, so let's let the man come in and do some fun relationship building. Also, our on point summer bulletin that I encourage the audience to watch for that hits 17,000 mailboxes by the first week of August. That 12-page magazine about Arrowhead is done, and it's at the printer as we speak. I'll be able to share up, I guess, proof of that with the board via email in the next few days. Also, the annual meeting for the school board is coming up on August 16th. That's something I would encourage the audience to attend. It's a one-time event where you will learn a lot about Arrowhead, particularly the budgets and the economic factors that we face. You'll also hear about celebrations of previous school year. I've designed the celebration part of the slideshow, and that's been completed. I'll hand that off to Conrad, he can use it, he can modify it, he can pitch it and start on his own, but try to make it a smooth transition again. So I believe it'll be a successful transition from me to Conrad, not just because of all of our prep work, but because Conrad Farner is a smart, personable man. He's got strong superintendent experience in his background as he comes into Arrowhead High School. And then just a few, I guess, personal comments, if you'll indulge me. I'd like to publicly thank Arrowhead students, staff, parents and community for all of the incredible support you've given me over the last eight years, but more importantly, the important support you've given to Arrowhead. This is an amazing school. I had a 33-year career in the field of education as a teacher, an author, a principal, a director of learning, and as a superintendent. And all of those roles have been across five different school districts. Arrowhead has been my favorite. I feel privileged to have been a part of this Arrowhead team. I've had a lot of people ask me, what are you going to do in retirement? I like to think that means I look way too young here. And job offers, I can drive a bus if I want to, and some other offers. And I've been telling people, I'm going to take August and September to just focus on some needed health and wellness. After a while, I'll find a part-time job that's meaningful and fun. Since my original idea of being a lottery winner for retirement hasn't come through yet. I do want to work, I love to work, I love to work hard and to help people. I relish the opportunity to spend more time with family and friends who have likely neglected over the years with very long work hours. Some of you may know or may not know, my husband, between my husband and I, we have nine children. Eight boys, one girl, they range from 36 to 26 years old. Think of the number of grandchildren that are possible. We have franchise number five coming in early August, and those five grandkids are only from two of the nine. So I look forward to lots of time with grandkids. And finally, I think I'll be keeping it quite busy during my retirement, but I will always care deeply about Arrowhead and its people. I'll be keeping in touch and certainly will be following all of Arrowhead's future happenings and successes to be sure, and I thank you very much.
I want to thank Laura. Laura is a huge advocate for her administrative team, but every teacher at the school and having those. She's the biggest cheerleader for every student at school. She will be missed. We also know that despite your problem need for a little more sleep and time with family, your retirement probably will be shortened. What I do know of Laura is that she doesn't stay too idle for too long. So we look forward to hearing what the next act is and wish you much success.
And you know my phone number.
Okay, with that, I thank you for your comments on the transition and the hungout with Conrad and all of your work that you're doing in the dance of his arrival. We will go at this point into the comments from members of the public. I will leave. The rules of engagement for this portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register on the sign-up form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and should remain light and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item, when the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and words of action, though there will be no citizen communications during the time of agenda process. Speakers that are not immune from legal consequences related to the contents of their speech.
Thank you, Kate.
With that, we will move into our first speaker, Chris Anson.
Good evening, thank you Ben. I'm a Hartland resident and father of twins at Hartland Lakeside, so they will be here someday, but it's a long way to go. I do support policy 335, and I believe it is removing distractions, confusion, and potential discomfort for students who may share different opinions. The policy is sensible, and it helps keep the classrooms focused on education, on education. When we label a place as safe, the natural opposite is what? Unsafe. That wouldn't be good for a school in general. If I say this is a microphone area, and I talk to you over here, there's not a microphone. Safe space, unsafe space, it's opposite. So if you say safe, then that means there are other areas that are not safe. If that's true, then you have some other problems you need to address in the school as a whole. And so again, let's focus back on this one now. The room is designated as safe because it has bulletproof glass, steel doors. Please put stickers that are neon and LED flashing lights, because if there's a problem, I want my kids someday to be able to run to that room. But if not, let's not put more work on our teachers, let's let them be educators, let's let them teach. Kim pointed out earlier, you have a lot of counselors and support groups and places that kids can turn. Members of the audience mentioned that they like places for their kids to be able to move right away. Make sure that the students are aware of that, and the teachers are aware to direct. Also, when you bring in religious, political, sexual orientation, all of these things cause division. And when you promote them, that causes division. So I would encourage you to teach and educate about the different positions. I think you should do that, but I don't think you should promote. Imagine if we could put something in each room that would unite all of us here. Perhaps something that would work in all 50 states that might unite everyone rather than revoting individual groups. And again, I'll say it again, I've met Adam quite a few times, he's a nice guy. And if there are problems in the school where kids are not safe, should address that really quickly. But having certain designated rooms overtakes teachers, takes away time from education and causes division. So please, I encourage you tonight, please pass 335 for all students, not yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Alec Dumps.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Alec Dumps. Some of you know me here because I'm their neighbor. I grew up with their children. I may have been a student of some of yours, or some may have seen me on the ballot last year. I'm not here to talk as a politician or as an activist. Here to talk is a recent alumni representing dozens of students who no longer feel comfortable at Arrowhead. Six years ago, I came out as bisexual. I was 15 years old. As a sophomore here at Arrowhead, I knew immediately that if word spread in this very conservative school and community, it would cause irreparable harm. I lose acquaintances, I lose friends, I lose the ability to feel comfortable in my own school. In a recent statement from this school board, the claim that these safe spaces, something that I don't believe are well-defined in the policy itself, insinuate that other areas are less tolerant by comparison. As elected representatives like yourselves, and as someone who ran to represent this community on the state level, we should know how to handle hard truths. The hard truth is, some areas of the school are less tolerant. Because I came out, I no longer felt safe registering for certain classes where I knew certain students, staff members or educators would be present. I changed where I sat in cafeteria, I didn't sign up for clubs that I might have been interested in. Often, I'd have to pretend to go along with offensive jokes that my classmates made that included slurs, just so I wouldn't be questioned by my fellow students. All out of fear that like too many students experienced, I would be ostracized and isolated. But my own anecdote will not be enough to sway the school board. My career requires me to analyze policies at the state, federal level. The most common problem I see is poorly written and defined legislation. Policy 335 is no different. Under this policy, signs saying "all are welcome" will be scrutinized. Advertisements for clubs like the Arrowhead Gay Straight Alliance, or even clubs that I might join, not join myself, like the Teenage Republicans Club, would be banned. Anti-racist, anti-racist signs would be banned. Student in a recent article in the Arrowhead stated, what would they rather have, racist signs? Educators, staff members, students, alumni, parents and community members oppose this for a simple reason. Why? Why is this even on the table? Why is showing language insinuating students should feel safe and comfortable controversial? What teenage student who has homework and friends and sports and a future to think about gets angry over a sign? Who this does affect, and who this only affects, are students that need a community, students that worry about their safety and comfort. Gay, straight, freshmen, senior, black, white, Hispanic, Asian. So I ask the school board to think tonight, what is the point? Why are we scared of rainbows or signs that say racist are racist? Signs that say, hey, do you want to meet other individuals like you? Do you need an accepting and supportive community? Here's a great place to do so. This policy will not make every area of this school equally tolerant, it will make the whole school equally intolerant. I urge the board to vote aye tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Brad Wildgall.
Hello. My name is Christopher Norcross, and I graduated from Arrowhead High School in 2022, and I'm about to be a sophomore at UW Madison this fall. During my first week at college, I introduced myself more times than I think I ever have in my life. I think I actually started changing little facts about myself each time, just to make it that much more. I gave my major, my interests, my hometown, all the normal stuff. But when I said that I went to Arrowhead High School, there would always be a noticeable pause from the person that I was talking to if they were somewhat familiar with where I came from. Arrowhead, the person would usually say, isn't that the school that? And then they would begin to describe their image of this school. What I ended up learning was that people are afraid of this school. They see it as unsafe, not accepting of different beliefs and a place to get away from rather than a place to ponder with that in mind. I wish I could say this came as a surprise for me to hear, but sadly, the actions of this board and policy 335 lead me with the same outlook as the people I introduced myself to in college. From what I understand, this policy intends to ban areas marked "safe spaces" because all of this school is a safe space. Memories of White Lives Matter being written by a student on a hallway whiteboard in response to Black History Month says otherwise. Memories of a peer saying a racial slur on video, but the person who took said video not bringing it to the school because they wouldn't do anything, says otherwise. Memories of a soccer teammate calling a black player on the opposing team the N-word because we were losing, says otherwise. This is what this school is being defined by. So why not acknowledge the ugly truth and find a way to fix it? I implore this board not to pass policy 335, and don't make Arrowhead High School a dirty wood. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. John Anson.
Thank you, John Norcross, parent of one former and one current student here. Like its predecessors, policy 333, 334, and 651, policy 335 is bad policy. A motion should be made to send that, send it back to the policy committee. This is for at least the following reasons. One, as I said, it remains solely unclear as to what problem this policy seeks to solve. It didn't start out solving a defining problem, is it bullying, divisiveness, politics in schools, changes, each teacher's thoughts? The only outside consultation is the school's legal counsel and the select WISRed backboard members in other districts. No students, pet teachers, parents or experts in the field of education or mental health have been engaged. We now know that policy 335 represents extreme egregious overreach by this board into operational matters that are the rene of the school administration. This policy seeks to give the board total and direct control over displays and postings in the school. This goes well beyond flags and stickers to include in our reading, anything used by educators in the classroom, including any and all curriculum content. This is something the entire community, really those of you who consider yourselves conservative, could reject. Lastly, the policy rejects the consensus among educators and mental health professionals. Their safe spaces are essential to student well-being. Furthermore, they are the very foundation for teachers to connect kids with the curriculum, creating an environment where kids are free to realize their full potential. Banning safe spaces, prohibiting safe space stickers, reducing student teacher autonomy will only damage the school experience for students. If you are here to stand with, to support, or otherwise protect our students, then you will, like me, register your opposition to policy 335 and request that you vote down. Thank you.
Allison Farrell. No, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Allison, I'm on Didier President's Cast here. I am here to voice my opposition to policy 335. I have some data to share with you, but on a more personal note, I work with kids myself, I work with adolescents, I work with teenagers. And unfortunately, in my career, I have had the terrible experience of having to spell an adolescent child that her sister had died of suicide. So when I bring you this data, know that I bring it with a very heavy heart, and I know how heavy these decisions are and how deeply they can affect students. One thing I want to mention is that in 2021, students from Arrowhead and other Waukesha County students participated in a survey called the Youth Risk and Fear Survey. I assume you're familiar with it. It's an intensive survey that asks a wide variety of questions about students' mental health and risk-taking behaviors. DPI does an analysis of this data that can compare students from different schools, different counties to state averages. You can get a lot of really rich information from this survey. In 2021, Arrowhead participated in, participated in the Waukesha County sample, and one of the things that this survey says across the board in Waukesha County is that our LGBTQ students are less safe than schools. They have more mental health concerns in schools, and that they're bullied at grade rates than their peers. And that's not to say that we shouldn't support all students' mental health, we absolutely should. But in 2021, 73% of cisgender students said they felt a sense of belonging at school. That number was 42% for LGBTQ students. Bully at school online, 20% of cisgender students, 41% of LGBTQ students. Now, this one's interesting, have a teacher to talk to. This was the only statistical area on the survey where the gap was less than 10%. 72% of cisgender students said they had a teacher to talk to, 63% of LGBTQ students said they had a teacher to talk to. Why do you think that is? Why do you think teachers put those stickers on their doors? Because they know this fact, that 50% of cisgender students report mental health concerns, and 87% of LGBTQ students reported mental health concerns, including depression, anxiety, non-suicidal self-harm and suicide. Teachers are putting those stickers up, not because they're forced to or because it's an extra thing, or even because they care, and because they know these numbers in a lived way. The last thing I want to say is, as I've heard people speaking, Kim, you spoke very highly of the student services department. I think that's great, I trust that department, I think they're doing great things for kids here. But if you're going to trust them, then you need to trust their judgment too. I was here at an earlier meeting where the school psychologist spoke and asked that you not pass the policy about requiring parents to give consent for prom. You didn't listen to his professional judgment in that. I know at the policy meeting, Mr. Wolf presented similar data, I think also from the YRBS about sense of belonging for LGBTQ students. Yet I feel you're putting on display the great work that they do, yet you're ignoring their professional input, and I think that's bad judgment across the board. So in conclusion, I say I'm opposed to policy 335, and I ask that it not be passed.
Laura. Marcy Sutcliffe.
Hello, Dan. I'm just gonna end up reading a bit of the letter I mentioned to you earlier today, just in case I do read it. I would like it to be out of record that I am again making my opposition to this policy clear. The idea of the policy has spooked much controversy and division within this community, contrary to its claim to be a positive and a positive. I am asking you, board, if you're not passing the policy, let me tell you something. Specifically regarding LGBTQ students in Arrowhead, we have heard from many parents, students, administrators, alumni about the clear disparities among these students in regards to feeling a sense of belonging to Arrowhead, thoughts of self-harm rooted in personal experiences and the youth risk of suicide. You have heard that the CDC recommends safe spaces for youth, mental health, still ignore that. Current students created Current students created a petition promoting the opposition of this policy. It garnered more than three hundred and twenty-five signatures, um, on a check survey. But how are all these voices not being considered? Um, as Farrell just said, that you're ignoring the professionals, the experts in your field. And it's unfortunate. Um, it's important, continuing to pass the policy. I would like to know how you would reduce, dare I say, eliminate the proposal that Arrowhead. Um, your behavior data has shown, I confirm this earlier, as recent as two thousand and twenty-one, that this is a root problem here. And yet we are not looking at that root problem. We really need to look at that root problem and fix that. And I think only, excuse me, only when you can recognize and appreciate everybody's differences and individuality, can everybody feel seen, recognized, and heard. And I have asked the board numerous times to consider the idea of having an inclusion consultant come in. In corporate America, diversity, equity, and inclusion is a very common practice and a very common, definitely good at Harley, right? So, yeah, um, but it's a very common thing to be doing. And if we're going to be preparing our students to live in this world, they need to be able to do this thing. You guys making decisions for them about what they're offended by? I mean, they do need to be able to express their opinions, but part of the DPI itself. The DPI regulations say that students need to be able to develop, um, and critical thinking and develop their own safety thinking. So. Oh, the, the inclusion thing, I am volunteering myself to look into sponsorship for an inclusion consultant to come in. If you guys choose to accept that recognition from me. And uh, thank you, Dan, for responding to the email today. I have not been getting many emails recently and if they are, I would enjoy that, uh, can, yes, the process. So it's nice to know that some people are paying attention. Um, and separate issue, but worth mentioning, um, after reading through all the emails from an open record request, um, it was frustrating to see the topic. Um, this topic was on the board radar well before Mr. Ferris claimed that it was brought to their, your attention in a fall of twenty-two board meeting. Um, there are, there are emails from Mr. Ferris and Mr. Schubert directly to the Kellin Marine School District asking for a copy of their policy, not wanting to recreate the deal. And, um, there was one indication that Mr. Schubert said that he would are, or maybe, um, maybe considering a similar policy within the next couple weeks. So it seems that when, uh, Mr. Ferris said that nobody had had it on their radar before public rights, their attention in the fall, seems like they're misrepresenting the facts. So, uh, transparency of the board intentions seriously worries me. So I really, really urge you guys to bring us back to committee, think about this some more. You listen to so many people tell you that it's a bad idea, but you see if you can avoid them.
Ethan? I'm so sorry, I can't make up the last name.
Sorry, you know, I wrote it back.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Hi, I'm Ethan. I have, I'm an active student here. I have direct issue with policy three, three, five. It has no meaning in fact. It effectively just pulls out and points out that students should not have a space to feel like they belong. It's effectively making it so people don't feel comfortable in the school. Stating that a safe, all spaces are a safe space immediately denies that. It makes, if you say every space is a safe space, no spaces. It makes it seem like you care basically not about the students at all. It brings to the point that I and several other students who identify as being part of the LGBTQIA+ community do not feel safe representing our identities in this. And this could go for any other marginalized group. It could go for effectively anybody. It doesn't have to be a marginalized group even. It just seems like you're pushing a thought process anyway onto students that you haven't requested their opinion on. I haven't gotten any emails from the board stating, what is your opinion on this policy? Do you think this policy would be a good idea? I know nobody that has received an email or a way of contact implying, well, not implying, but requesting their opinion on this. That's all I have to say, and I would request that you immediately deny pushing this policy.
Thank you. Chase Houston?
Those, the safe place stickers have actually been a saving grace for me in many occasions. But one in specific, I have been bullied for being gay and I was unable to feel safe talking to teachers about those safe place stickers. And just telling them half the story, having helped me to tell the teachers why it was happening and give the full story. A lot of, some people say that all of Arrowhead is a safe place, but it truly isn't. Some teachers aren't as supported with minority groups of people. So these stickers help me and other people to actually tell teachers why stuff has been happening. If we get rid of it, some people like me who are already here or who are coming in, uh, can feel unsafe to tell a teacher the full story just because they don't know the teacher's feelings about these groups that they may be in. And people ignore the fact that some teachers are not okay with people being part of a minority group. A teacher who I'm playing, I had specifically went to them for the following and then given them the full story along with stuff that happened outside of the class that was just in the halls. And I saw that sticker and knew they would be okay with it and would be the perfect person to talk to. Those stickers add safety to minority groups of all kinds. Just because people claim all this school is safe doesn't mean it really is. The lunchroom is a great example. There is a big lack of supervision that if a person doesn't say anything to a teacher, they won't know what happened and the cameras may not pick up on it to show that it happened. So if they do say something, it's just their word against someone else's word. So it is so easy for kids to be bullied for any reason in places like that. I have talked to teachers about how they feel about these stickers and they've said, one of them had said, and I quote, those stickers mean that you can come to the teacher about anything, whether it be a divorce, a breakup, bullying, financial problems, anything. It represents minority groups because they have some of the worst problems. I and some other people have set up a petition that I sent to all the school board members with, with a signature list of about thirty, three hundred and thirty-three people when I checked the class. And it has a signature list on the bottom and has comments from some of these people I would suggest you may want to look at. And just as a final thing, my parents would agree, I have had to grow up way too fast and get way too mature for my age because of what other people have done. Because of what I've gone through. And in my opinion, I don't think anyone else should have to grow up to be an adult so fast just because they want to feel safe and have to deal with people and a lot of other problems. I mean, doesn't a lot of people want to go back and not have a bunch of responsibilities? Not have to do everything they have to as an adult and just be a kid, be who they want to be. So please, I encourage you to vote no to policy three, three, five, day. Thank you for the time to speak.
Matt Schwab?
Hello, thank you. My name is Matt Schwab. I have a incoming freshman and two younger children, both be attending now at Sunday. What we have here is a solution in search of a problem. Your job as a school board is to create policies that support our students. Here we have a policy that supports no one, but potentially hurts our LGBTQI students. Studies suggest five to ten percent of youth identify within, identify within the LGBTQI community, which translates to an estimated one hundred to two hundred students at Arrowhead. These are some of the most at-risk members of our community. Think about the fact that LGBTQI youth are three and a half times more likely to attempt suicide, likely due to the fact that sixty percent say their home is an affirming event. Forty percent say they live in a community that is not accepting of them. If the majority of these youth don't feel safe in their own homes, a safe space at school could be a true lifesaver for them. This justification that these signs promote one group over another is simply ludicrous. Go into our gym, we've got all sorts of banners promoting athletic achievements to the exclusion of those not talented enough to make those teams. Should we ban the promotion of athletics as well? Our community is a better place when we have a diverse population. The ability to fund and promote a wide variety of programs, each of which only benefits a subset of the population is a true privilege we have as a relatively wealthy community. Make no mistake, this policy is not about making things equal for all students. To push this policy under the guise of equality is insulting and offensive. The only people you're providing comfort to with this policy are students, parents, community members who are uncomfortable with the fact that five to ten percent of the world is LGBTQIA. I'm talking to everyone in the room here. An argument for this policy, a vote for this policy is an argument or vote in favor of homophobia. No one has ever come out on the right side of history by working to discriminate against and make life difficult for a segment of society. We're here to prepare our kids for the quote-unquote real world. Well, there are gay people out there. There are trans people out there and they are here as well. They're going to be your clients and your coworkers. They're going to be your friends and your family members, and one day they might be your children. Please reconsider the implementation of this policy.
Raffi Anderson?
Good evening. Um, thank you to all the board members for everything you do. I needed to put a lot of time and effort into this stuff, so I thank you very much. And Laura, thank you for all your work with the school. Um, really appreciate everything and wish you the best. So I believe that we don't have to let this issue divide up. And I believe that we could find a solution that is a win-win if we want to. Um, if our Arrowhead community is anything like a country of large, then we're actually closer together on this issue than we think we are. I believe that most people here want every student at Arrowhead to feel, um, welcome, included, and comfortable. Likewise, I believe most people here do not want any radical ideas from the right or the left taught in school as those incontrovertible truths. So regarding policy three, three, five, I have some questions. So what is the scope of the problem that the signs, stickers, and flag are intended to solve? Um, what are the other solutions we looked at to solve whatever that, whatever the problem was or is? And what are the opposing paths of all those possible solutions? Um, what made us decide that the signs and stickers and flags will solve that problem? Um, how do we know that the signs will help and not hurt the students and the community? I mean, the students we're talking about are the, sometimes the most vulnerable students. So how can we be sure that we are going to help them and not make the situation worse? My point is that we don't want to cure that is worse than the disease, right? Um, how do we know that the signs, the flags, and stickers would not lead to more problems? I mean, it only takes one student having a bad day or making a bad decision and they see a student walking out of a room that had one of these signs and they bully that student worse. Um, so will this lead to more bullying and alienation? Um, how will it affect the teachers? Will the teachers feel pressure one way or another to post or not post signs? Um, if they don't post signs, is that a sign to the students that they're not open and they're not willing to help? I mean, I doubt it. I believe that every teacher in this school would be open to helping the child as best that they possibly could. And if they didn't have all the answers, they would go to any of the resources that you mentioned that we have to try to help those kids. Um, so what, what would these things do to the work environment for the teachers? Um, what will the learning, what will happen to the learning environment for the students? What kind of legal liability are we opening teachers up to? What happens to the trust between the teachers and the parents? Are teachers now legally responsible for telling their parents what the students are sharing with them? Um, is this too much to put on the teachers who seem like they're really already overworked and have their own personal lives that they're dealing with as well? Um, so when we introduce something, we should, I think, have proved that it will work to solve the problem at hand. We don't want to introduce factors that can make things worse. So I support this policy because I think it's neutral. It, it doesn't introduce anything new that isn't well-studied that could make things worse. So I urge you to have the policy for now. And let's watch what happens around the country and in other districts, in places that do have signs and, and safe, and safe spaces and in districts that don't. And let's, let's let other places kind of be the experimental zone. And let's see what happens. We can revisit the policy, I, I think. Um, and if, if it's proven in time that these things actually bring unity and healing to the school, then we can revise the policy in a minute. And if they're proven to make things worse, then won't we be happy that we didn't dive in without thinking this through? There's just too much at stake, students' wellbeing is at stake. We have to make careful, well-thought-out decisions backed by evidence that the solution that we're proposing is going to work. So I urge the board to pass the policy tonight for now. Thank you for your time.
Benjamin Sutcliffe?
Hey, good evening. I am speaking tonight in opposition to policy three, thirty-five. I am sure that all of you board members have thought about this before tonight. I'm sure you all started tonight with an idea of how you're going to vote. As a member of the community and a parent of two Arrowhead high, high school students, I'm a personally a high school teacher in the city of Milwaukee. Ask you to please reject this policy. You've heard from members of the community and former students, Arrowhead's reputation. Um, as I said, I don't teach here. Um, Arrowhead has a really, really good reputation among educators. But as I'll address in the next minute or two, I feel as policies like this are not only a danger to our students. I think it is hurting Arrowhead and hurting our ability to attract the finest staff. Arrowhead will not keep the legal standard if the board passes policies like three, thirty-five. Is one reason I'd like to please reject it tonight. Um, I think this policy, three, thirty-five, would remove a necessary safeguard for our students. We should protect young adults under our care. Um, protecting them, I think, means don't drop them into the real world, something we'll talk about. Um, high school is that period of growth and I believe that three, thirty-five would remove appropriate protections we have right now. Protections that have worked, protections that are part of what made Arrowhead great. Other speakers, I do medical examples since they've addressed the board. I would give you back on that and I'd ask my board first, do you know, are keep things the way they are now, because I believe it has been very successful and this helped make Arrowhead great. I think that if you did pass three, thirty-five, that we put administration, teachers, and students and we lose the new situation. You've heard from so many members of the public, uh, so many people tonight about how they think they'd be negatively affected by three, thirty-five and how students would be hurt. Again, I agree with them, but I would like to address the idea of staffing. Again, I agree with them, but I would like to address the idea of staffing and retention, and how policies like 335 hurt our ability to keep Arrowhead great. I did notice in reading through the material on our school website that the recent June 12 meeting of our Arrowhead Personnel Committee, retention and attracting the finest staff was addressed. As we say goodbye to Superintendent Myra, again, I just want to highlight what we want to keep the best, and you have that amazing cast-up there. I think if the board passes Policy 335, teachers will not feel as welcome here, teachers will not want to join us. The restrictions in the actual policy, I read every word of the original policy, every word of revised policy. It talks about having the superintendent do frequent sweeps, maybe every quarter, maybe every semester of a room. So the superintendent will walk from room to room, looking for forbidden objects, looking for things on the wall that wouldn't be allowed. That's what the policy says the superintendent would have to do. As a teacher, that would not make me feel welcome, that would not make me feel valued. Again, I urge you to please reject Policy 335. I would also call the board's attention, I think some of you have already seen it. There was a guest column in the Journal Sentinel this Sunday. The name of the column was "Board Policies Left No Choice But To Leave Waukesha Schools." It was about a very well-regarded teacher and why he left Waukesha this last year, and that he's seen a lot of quality staff from Waukesha schools and other schools near us. I don't want that to happen in Arrowhead. Please reject Policy 335. We have a new superintendent starting next month. I think we can really set some awesome groundwork for a great school year. Please don't squander the opportunity with a new superintendent and a new school year. Please do not pass Policy 335. I encourage you to vote no and keep pushing to make Arrowhead one awesome, diverse team. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hackman. Some of you may recognize me from many news articles and videos that have been, you know, floating around. I'm going to be sophomore here very soon, and I'm appalled at what the Arrowhead School is choosing to do with this policy. As soon as I was aware of this policy, I was concerned for my safety and the safety of my fellow students. Many students here have spoken to me about how they feel safe with these stickers, and I feel more comfortable with these. It is clear there's been numerous reports of bullying and harassment within these halls, and not a lot of things were being done to combat this. I feel unsafe, and I heard words being passed around the hallways continuously throughout my school day. When I came here and I was introduced to the GSA, I finally felt like I had a place to belong. Finally felt that I was comfortable within a space and like I could exist without being controversial. We don't want to push any agenda by having these stickers up. We just want to know where to go and where to feel safe. Every single student has different needs. Like, every person on a sports team has different abilities and needs to succeed. These stickers are just a way to make the school more accessible for students, not to push anyone away from different spaces. So I want to see students feel safe. The suicide rates are so high that I'm worried about the incoming freshmen. I'm worried about my friends. I don't want the bothers to be covered in flowers because of the things you are trying to do here today. So I plead you, say no to Policy 335. Thank you.
Lauren Martin.
Hello, my name is Lauren Martin, and I use Zayn and Programs. I graduated Arrowhead in 2022, but I stopped coming to school in November of 2021 because the only feasible solution to me being bullied was to have me stop showing up at school. You can say that the reason that we shouldn't have safe space stickers and signs is that everyone should feel safe. But should feel safe and are safe are two very different statements. You cannot just say everyone should feel safe and magically make it true. You cannot sit here and tell me that the school is a safe space for everyone when there were staff members that laughed along with the bullying and went along with it, and I had no choice but to use the stickers to identify which teacher's room I could eat my lunch in that day. You can take down our stickers, but we will only grow stronger as a community. Because we have hate, or we have love and acceptance to put this together, but all you guys have in common is hate.
That was my kid. I'm Suzanne Martin. I am a Heartland resident. I have two Heartland graduates, and I am a former employee here. And that's the way I know your laws. You might remember a year or more ago when there was an Arrowhead English teacher who got up here and read that poem to you. Then they came for me. And she read it to you as a cautionary tale. You guys have taken it as a road map. And now with this policy, you're pretty much coming for everybody. Let's be clear, those stickers are already here. This policy is to remove the stickers. It's not like we're going to be trying something new with the stickers. The stickers are here, and as these kids have told you, the stickers work. It's not dangerous. You haven't had a single kid come up here and say, hey, I saw a sticker in the classroom and it totally creeped me out. I can't go in there. No, the stickers work for the kids that need them. For the kids that don't, great, they feel safe already. This board has heard from students, both former and current, over the last year and a half about how the students in the LGBTQ community are verbally abused, harassed, sometimes assaulted on a daily basis here at Arrowhead. The staff and the administration has conceded that this happens, that this is an issue that they are trying to wrap their arms around, and they haven't been able to control it. Are you, in this policy, telling us that those people were being untruthful to you? Because that's what this policy says. It says, no, you're safe. No, these kids, it's not even that, oh, I don't feel safe. They're not safe. And these stickers will help them. They have helped them. The stickers are here. You enacting a policy that says everyone is safe, this is a safe place, doesn't make it so. The students should be allowed to enter a classroom, walk the halls, be in the lunchroom, free from harassment, but they're not. You saying that this policy says they will be does not make it so. There's no magic in your policy. What your policy does is it removes any identifying mark that a kid can use to know they can go talk to someone, to know they can go in there and into a classroom and not be harassed in that classroom. It tells a kid that maybe I won't get barked at or charged at here or calling names. One of my kids was charged at, like physically charged at, at the homecoming dance two years ago. Charged at and barked at because of what they are. Charged at and barked at by a bunch of, a group of, and it's not a big kid, by a group of, maybe they were your sons, but a group of boys who are probably going to be seniors this year. Did that activity, did that toughen my kid up? Was that good for my kid to help toughen my kid up and make them stronger? Probably not. This policy is going to greenlight that kind of activity and that kind of behavior across the board. It's going to let kids know, hey, I can do that, and no one's going to come after me. And the kids that are being attacked will not have a safe place to go to. They might figure out some way that they can identify who can I feel safe with, but I'm telling you, there's staff here too where a kid can't go in there and say, hey, this is happening to me, because they will get laughed at, and there will be a pile of nons. And I honestly don't think that the administration is going to be ready for what these kids are going to do and how the other kids are going to feel and how they won't be safe. That's it. And thank you for your time and attention, and I know you're going to vote for this thing, but I'm not going to stop fighting this stuff, and neither are the rest of these people. You got to come down on the right side of this, and maybe one day you will. Maybe one day when all these kids that are growing up and aging out of school will be voting. You know, maybe that'll change things, but I mean, you got to get with where the world is at. This is embarrassing, and it's shameful.
My name is Amy. I already spoke. Wanted to go on the record that I'm opposing the policy, but I did want to add one last thing. You say that you want to bring all the children, all the students together, say you want to represent all the students. You say that the majority of students and staff, community members, support this policy. I see a vast majority of emails, people speaking up, really brave students coming out to oppose this policy. That's what I'm seeing and reading with my eyes. But if you do believe that the majority that supports this, please ask them. Just use that market researcher, ask all the students, all of them. Does this offend you? Do you feel divided? Does this help you? Ask the teachers, is this taking too much of your time? Do you not want to do this? Do you not want to see these things? Or do you feel like it's helping and this is what you want to do? Ask the parents. But don't just make the decision by these board members because you think you know. Ask. Thank you.
Wanted to start by thanking Dr. Myra for her service here as a superintendent. It was great having you here, and I'm looking forward to what you're doing next. Yeah, the next thing I wanted to talk about was Policy 335. Okay, so I graduated just this June, and I'm looking at this policy, and I see the merit in the policy. I can see the merit, and I can see the good intentions. But I truly cannot see the benefits. We know that the pride stickers can help students feel safe, but opening up in school, we've had a lot of students here talk about how those stickers let them feel safe and show them who they can trust. We know that they can help students reach out in times that they need it, and like what has been said at the policy meetings by our administration. If there's any piece of imagery with any power to help or save a student's life, then it should not be taken out. I don't know a single person who actually has an issue with the pride stickers at Arrowhead. I gave pride stickers to teachers during the 2022 June school, uh, June pride month. It wasn't school endorsed by them, during my junior year. And whenever any of my deeply religious or conservative friends saw it, they didn't really care. They may have held unsavory opinions about LGBT people and expressed that to me vocally, but the stickers never created a distraction when they were in the environment. I can't in good conscience condone removing stickers that can be lifelines in order to ensure that by an off chance we are protecting some student who actually has a problem with them. Also, as has been discussed, this is not being received well by teachers or students. Numerous times we have come to board meetings, we have voiced our opinions, and numerous times we have been disregarded. No matter what you believe this policy will accomplish, it is being seen as hostile from the students and staff at Arrowhead. There has to be a way in which we can implement this policy to change it in such a way that it contains the original merit and the original intentions, but is not seen as a hostile move towards LGBT students. All I ask is that you change the policy to not be so seemingly hostile towards the LGBT population of Arrowhead. I ask that when you vote, you keep in mind all the students here who have expressed their gratitude for the signs. I ask that when you vote, you ask yourselves truly, clearly, how much havoc these safe space stickers are wreaking. I want you to consider whether it's worth getting rid of the signal to a lifeline for students who need it most, all in order to ensure a homogenous environment. Thank you for your time.
So, I guess certainly, being an independent, so we have two sides of the room, and I see people doing this, people doing that. And as an independent, which I think actually 60% of the population is, we like to see a range of things. You have the pendulum on one side that happens to swing to the pendulum on the other side of that. Whereas us, we want to sustain it somewhere. And what's made throughout the history of our world has always been the liberty and authority. To live in a free society is not to live in a perfect society because perfection is not available. I was taught to be tolerant of everyone, give respect to those who deserve it, and understand that all people are individuals in need. Everyone need able to do what they want to do with their lives as long as it does not impinge on the rights of others. This should be expected by all society, by all people. There are liberal-minded people on the left, right, and center, irrespective of what people would call it political. The traditional liberal values are especially important in education. Individual liberalism, shared humanity, meritocracy, freedom, freedom of expression, equality in politics. Education should be well-rounded on the self-personal political biases presented by those in authority. The student should be able to learn from different viewpoints and use critical thinking skills to improve their own decisions. This would also include the ability for good-based debate and open dialogue. And sometimes you're going to hear things you don't want to hear. But with a side with respect and a good faith, that is how it should be taken by both sides. Having both sides of the coin presented in curriculum and classroom discussions surrounding it. In the school setting, there's an imbalance of power for a student to disagree or bring up contrary points in the teacher's lessons or grievances to administration in any situation. So sometimes you're not hearing from all of the students. Some of the students who disagreed with other things do not bring it up either, and you don't hear all voices. For me, I think the political signage, emblems, and flags should not have been allowed in the first place. Because when we introduce division, it's not a great society. I think we have a real problem, since it was talked about over a year ago in a meeting about the bullying, about the discipline. And I think that is not, if anything, basis of the failure, is the failure of those policies and how to address it. There's been bullying since I was in high school 35 years ago. There's going to be bullying forever, and it does happen to everyone, unfortunately. I got called the jolly reeja for four years of high school, and you know what it made me do? It made me stand up taller. And it sucks sometimes, and even as adults. I'm a loner. I don't fit in anywhere, and I don't belong anywhere. And I'm okay with that. But that takes someone to understand themselves. Now, I think if we could all just tolerate one another and respect the differences of our opinions and teach that to our children, I think we'd be a lot farther. I do agree with the policy, but I think the policy should have been in place before to say it was not allowed to be in the first place to stop the separation.
Hello, Dave Lucas, I'm a parent of one current and one future Arrowhead student. Policy 335 has been presented by the board as a means to prevent division and foster the healing of the wrong. Look around. Is this what harmony looks like to you? A room full of angry parents and students? Is eradicating a symbol of acceptance with a sweep of an iron fist really? Is eradicating a symbol of acceptance with the sweep of an iron fist really the best way to create a feeling of belonging? And as long as Reddit, we're also going to ban a bunch of whole bunch of other stuff. That's not even present in the school's startup, just to make sure the teachers know that they're one multicolored poster away from the plan of mine. This policy is a response to a problem that doesn't exist, a problem that nobody's asking to repair. The only so-called problem was a little rainbow sticker that signaled that's okay, you're different, you're still welcome. But there are a handful of people, some sitting directly in front of me, who are unwilling to let a teenager know that it's okay to be gay. Perhaps the scariest thing about policy three three five is that with only a copy, a base, and a handful of word substitutions. We will have in writing the next logical progression of this campaign. A policy banning on school property, any and all books, images, videos, music, or other media. Denoting a division of race ideology, sexual orientation, gender preference, or political affiliations. The world has been down the censorship path before, and it's never been unwell. Please vote against policy three three five.
My name is John Simon. AHS alumni, a owner of the district, a family and friends who have kids currently are seen to be enrolled at Arrowhead. And despite the shame instilled in me in my time here, proud member of the LGBTQ plus community. I am here tonight, as many of us are, out of deep concern for the blatant bigotry even demonstrated at this school board. I'd love to frame that in any other way, but I'm not here to play games and pretend we are having a real discussion. We'll shed light on some fundamental truths this board is failing to grasp. Those fundamental truths have been explained to you in the simplest of terms. And those truths are supported by far reaching and comprehensive studies conducted by bodies far more qualified than the ability of this board. CDC, the American Psychiatric Association, and the American Medical Association, all pointing to the profound benefits of supporting the sense of security. Marginalized students have within their communities. A sense of security or insecurity that will follow them for the rest of their lives. At last month's school board meeting, we heard from the administration as they presented the academic year review, and it was truly impressive. The test scores, grades, college credits earned, active participation, the level of success. Are truly something that they and the faculty of this school should be proud of. What was abundantly clear as each of them spoke, those metrics were so impressive because of the varied supports divided. Success did not come from demanding students be a standard and waiting for them to catch up. But from providing them with individualized tools to help them. It was also clearly stated that there was more to be done, and this district is lucky enough that people working at it. Were eager to implement additional paths to success despite being governed by a board that is ripping against them. This proposal is an act of sabotage against those supports, against the student body, and against this community. The policy and the spirit that brought us all here tonight are the very reasons students needed a safe space together. Would-be bullies actively empowered by policies like the one you are pushing are being given an opportunity by the concept of safe spaces as well. Deep in their understanding of other people, their meaningful conflict resolution, and the value of contributions that arise from diversity in our communities. All skills they will need as members of a generation more diverse than any other that has walked the planet before them. The consequences for those attitudes on college campuses and in places of employment will be far greater than any they will find here. They will process those consequences without the benefit of their families in the home to help them navigate it. These manufactured fears about marginalization of the majority by creating a safe space for some could not be easier. The truth is that all urban hearts and minds are welcome. There's simply no truth to the repeated conservative assertion that creating equality for some erodes the rights of another. Reality that black lives do indeed matter, that LGBTQ plus kids exist now and they always have, but we have a history to reckon with by shining light upon. Is not an erosion of rights, no matter how triggered you may find yourself on lives you have not previously considered a sign of equal value to. For those of you so triggered by these notions, you might want to get yourself to a safe space before it's too late. There was no safe spaces when I went to Arrowhead at night. At best, I found a few good places to hide, but they never lasted. I dealt with harassment every day before I even had the chance to figure things out for myself. Gay slurs and daily threats of physical and sexual violence were basic expectations of walking to my locker, class, or God forbid, having to go to the bathroom. Many of these instances happened in front of faculty and staff that even allowed it to occur or were never properly trained in addressing such matters. My attendance at this school was atrocious because of it. Not because I was recklessly skipping school with no regard to my future, but because imminent danger was the present reality. I was experiencing so much anxiety that I physically could not breathe as I anticipated someone finally making a good effort for us. While all the adults left the other way. It landed me in the emergency room more times than I can count, receiving steroids and breathing treatments. All leading to extended stays so they could figure out what was wrong with me. The truth was, there was something wrong with the culture of this school and the community that allowed those attitudes to fester. Attitudes that led me to believe I was not safe, even in my own home. Attitudes you are not only resurrecting, but endorsing. Thankfully, I have since learned that my family would have supported me all along despite the message of the rest that may have been sent. That was the first step in moving on for me, but when your high school experience leads to a decade of therapy bills later in life. Think it's safe to see the situation following me after graduation. Just as this policy is going to follow you. Any member of this board that does not oppose this measure with the most full-throated disapproval they can muster. Can expect to be attached to this decision in life, in business, and will face the fallout that all this comes in time to dig us. This town is small, your names are known, and we're looking at a room full of people that will not forget, backed by a student body that will outwit you in every turn. There's never been a time like now to let your self-serving nature shine bright. Check this proposition and create less complicated futures for yourselves and the students of Arrowhead at the same time. And the parents that have chosen the right side of history, and students that should not have to fight the twisted minds of adults in their community for the right to feel safe in their own school. Please do not make the mistake I made and accept the illusion that these bigots have any power over you. Stickers on the doors of the best teachers do not make safe spaces. They are made when you value and support them. They come from recognizing that we all deserve a place at the table, and it takes different tools to get everyone to that table. Even if they pass this policy, that does not mean they win. If they want to disrupt public education, then it's an invitation to discuss this anywhere you find them in public. Make this, make this the center of every piece of artwork you produce on your own and in class to display on these buildings and throw up between you. When you see them out for dinner, let them know what you think of this policy. Do not be fooled by the play the victim, as they already have done and will continue to do. These are bigots presenting a hateful activist agenda. Do not let them tell you it is any form of love, compassion, or divine ordinance, because it is not. The greatest spirit is a group of miserable child shaming adults heads being held accountable for their own actions. That this policy is inactive, we should do just that every day of their lives.
Sue Jones.
Good evening. I'm Ken Rice, District President. I'm proud of two Arrowhead graduates. And former long timer of its school board member. Never sue and Donald. I say that because all three of us have spent many years working with Laura. If we stay here being firm, although a chapter in our school's history, it's impossible to overstate the impact the lawyers have on the lives. On the students, staff, faculty, and our entire community. Throughout her tenure, she has exemplified unwavering commitment. Inspiring judication leaving indelible mark on our hearts and minds. One of Laura's greatest qualities around women, unwavering devotion to our students. She has always been an advocate, a champion, and a guide in light, ensuring that every decision she made. Was centered on their needs and aspirations. Through visionary leadership, she has told me in the family where students flourish, where their dreams are nurtured, and where they are encouraged to reach rich desires. Equally commendable is Laura's exceptional ability to connect and communicate with her staff, faculty, and entire school community. Her remarkable communication skills have been a cornerstone of her success. Fostering environmental collaboration. Respect and understanding. Whether it was through her open door policy or her countless conversations. With students and teachers alike, she has always made everyone feel heard, valued, empowered. Under Laura's guidance, our school has experienced remarkable achievements. She's headed innovative initiatives that have raised the bar for excellence in education. Ensuring that our students are equipped with the skills and knowledge they need to succeed in a changing world. She created a culture of continuous improvement and collaboration. Inspiring teachers, her fellow administrators, and students alike to strive for greatness. With a compassionate heart and unwavering commitment to service have left an indelible imprint on the fabric of our community. Laura. Her remarkable leadership. Meeting students and extraordinary communication skills have paved the way for a bright future for our school and community. And until recently, may she keep controversy mostly at bay. I know the time we have spent together in the guidance you provided to the school board, I have memories of many long, often difficult conversations and decisions. You're always able to provide solid, well-reasoned advice. It was always based on age policy, the prior experience, school law, and good dose of common sense. Laura, on behalf of the students whose lives you have touched, the faculty and staff whom you have inspired. Having community you have spent so passionately to extend our deepest gratitude. Your unwavering dedication, integrity, and humblest love for education have made it last the impact of. As you embark the next chapter of your life, I wish you endless joy, fulfillment, and new adventures. May your retirement be filled with the same passion and enthusiasm you have shared with us throughout your tenure at AHS. Congratulations, Laura. Thank you for being an exceptional leader, mentor, and most importantly, a friend.
Well, I thank everyone for presenting the agenda. Public motion in our meeting. We're going to move on to our first agenda, I would consent to agenda. The consent agenda this evening comprises, I'm sorry, comprises the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board of education minutes. The June bill list. The resignations, requirements, contracts, and letters of appointment. And lastly, the annual sixty-six point zero three zero one for free mental occupation. I think the board members for a advanced review of these agenda items. And I'm wondering if we can have a motion to approve. There any, any further discussion on any of the items contained herein?
Um, just to clarify, are there no donations this month?
There are no donations.
And Adam, the occupational therapy contract, we're still with us. You're still with us, but.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, we're revoked on the approval of the full consent agenda. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The consent agenda will approve. Our first committee report and potential action item is policy. We have Chair Person Pierce on the phone. So if Chairperson Pierce is in a way of discussion, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, there is a. An according statement that it pleases the board that I would like to read that I. In case I wasn't able to speak, I think after listening to all members of it, I would like to share it anyway. If that is okay.
Absolutely.
So, this is my statement. To all the valued attendees of this meeting who hold the verdicts of policy three three five. I alongside my fellow board members have been overwhelmed by the abundance of correspondence regarding this policy. I asking any other topic to be countered, at least my opinion. Before we engage in a discussion, take action. I would like to personally share a brief statement. With a career standing over twenty-five years as a fashion designer, I've had the privilege of collaborating with individuals. With various backgrounds, who these many were considered part of minority groups. Contrary to prevailing oppositional views, policy is not an aim target in much longer. Rather, its purpose is to foster an inclusive atmosphere where emphasis is not placed on race, gender, sex, or any particular preference. We are Arrowhead, a unified team. While our experiences and professional and personal lives differ greatly. We take pride in AHS and what it means to be an Arrowhead Warhawk. Naturally, the goals beneath each individual. And our motto, there is something is for everyone at AHS, remains a testament to this belief. As a board member, more importantly, a father, Christian, and a compassionate human being. I hold profound love and respect for all individuals. I'm committed toward a school that prioritizes academic excellence. While celebrating our identity as Warhawks, common bonds that unite us. Rather than focusing on factors that shape decisions from our own. And having said that, um, we have a brief. Possible discussion on our most recent meeting that we had in policy. Well, we had a majority of our most recent policy meeting. Uh, was closed. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, with a closed session with our attorney Bob Butler. Just discussing the policy and his rewritten policy. Obviously, nothing within the closed session could be shared. However, there was a couple of mentions. That happened from, that I heard from different members. One, one in particular that was concerned that we have, that the next thing we're going to want oversight of is curriculum. I just wanted to. Confirm with that member of the public that the board always has oversight over curriculum. Uh, as well as ways and things for it in another school. Anything that has to do with curriculum, and this is how this written, or the policy was devised by our attorney, Mr. Butler. We did have. Some good discussion from all board members at that meeting. A lot of patience, um, and by the move Bob Butler revised version of the policy. Forward for discussion and action tonight. So having said that, um, I would like to. Turn it over to the board for the discussion and action.
If I could jump in quickly. Uh, just, just in terms of additional framing around, uh, events, uh, we have to this evening. Um, discussed at the last policy meeting was the prospects of having a conversation. With members of the GSA. And both suggested that the policy meeting.
Um, and both suggested that a policy meeting was met with group approval by board members and in fact, it needed to happen. Uh, at the end of June, um, and coordinating along with the school psychologist. Um, a discussion with a number of the members from their club. And they touched on a number of things around, uh, prospective candidates at the school. So they asked for, uh, just input, uh, their thoughts, because I think a lot of sharing that happened. And they began discussions, just taking a look at what avenues of support could be put in place. Uh, in addition to what's already being done, includes to the services. Um, I think they identified a number of, of things to, to work on. Um, and in addition, Adam and I have, uh, we've spoken as well about how we might move up here. In terms of, of global approach, uh, how do we work with the student body as a whole? To, um, to, to teach, to, uh, um, try and, you know, encourage. Uh, most respectful kind of communication with everybody. Globally, how long might we work with the school community? And members of families and members of the community at large. Uh, what type of programming could be put in place to broaden the communication then again? And again, reinforce respectful communication. So the conversations have started. Uh, we're, um, we're, we're happy to have people involved. And, um, I think for coordinating that we, uh, took that into term. Is there any further discussion from the board around the policy itself?
And just a question, the policy that's been presented tonight identical to the one that was before the committee.
The policy that is.
Question was whether the policy presented tonight is exactly identical to the one that was last viewed by the committee. But there's been other modifications communicated.
The, the document is the same with the exception of that the original draft policy that Bob, attorney Bob Butler had sent to us. Had an empty line and I can't remember the exact.
I, I recall that.
But it was a, a direct line and it was, so which person would do this role? And that's our lucky principal, Adam Kerr. And so that's, to my knowledge, and I think Kate and I were the only ones to use the document. We added that person name in and that, that's the only change.
Hey, since lengthy study, sorry. Thank you, Adam. Happy to do.
So we have before the board, um, action on proposed policy, there are five displays and postings and student banners. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the trial.
I'll accept the motion.
Is there any further discussion on the policy?
I would like to say something, please. As has been noted by numerous people in this audience tonight and elsewhere in emails. Um, there's a question about the purpose and our goal of this policy, why it's necessary, what will it, what will have been accomplished? If it's implemented as proposed, I don't think, uh, I have a good satisfactory answer for that. I don't think a lot of people do. What I do know, what has been accomplished so far. Is that we have had media coverage locally and as far away as Boston, Massachusetts. And I don't think most of it's been good. We've stirred up conflict and divisiveness in our community that this policy is purported to unify us. Hundreds of combined labor hours have been spent by board administration, attorney, citizens, attending meetings, writing emails. To what end? We even have tonight, I'm glad they haven't had to show up, police on call, on deck, just in case. Is this all positive for Arrowhead High School, for our reputation? I don't think so. Since the board's session on June twentieth, the school attorney Bob Butler, the proposal has been improved from its original draft. Some of the confusion about flags and symbols, for example, has been changed or removed. There are some worthwhile elements here. Yet one of the most egregious sections remains. The section focused on by many of the people in our community, that is its harshness for troubled kids. Who already have a tough time in school due to bullying. Section A one D addresses safe zones and the prohibition of such. Is abundantly clear through emails and personal testimony over the past weeks and even months. That all areas of our school are not safe for all students as this section of the proposal idealizes. Not all students experience Arrowhead equally. That has come across loud and clear. Kids are not the same. Kids are not all equal. Kids should not have equal needs. Some need more help than others. Some need tutoring. Some need help with physical issues. Some need help with emotional issues. Some need help with mental health issues. Some kind of play doing harm to themselves and do so. Some contemplate suicide and do so. This tragic. Reality has been referenced again and again in emails to us and in personal testimony to parents and students here. This is precisely why we make provision for kids with special needs. The kids have special needs is a fact. This is why Adam Bolt and his team are employed here. Kids are not the same. Some do in fact have greater needs than others. Not every kid experiences school in a safe place, as a safe place. To assert otherwise is to deny reality. This is not a political or an ideological issue, at least it shouldn't be. It is a human issue. It's a moral issue. Step back for a moment. If a kid gets bullied, her view is because he or she wears unusual clothing. Wears odd looking glasses, needs a hearing aid, can't speak clearly, behaves awkwardly in social situations. Has a deformed arm or crooked teeth. Do we ignore them and say, in effect, go figure it out for yourself? There's no help from you here. Of course not. We help them. What if a kid finds a kind of comfort in associating with others who describe themselves with a rainbow and a string of letters? Unlike the others just mentioned, are they to be shunned by the adults who run the school? Why? Because their particular issue has become politicized? Does that allow the adults running the school to ignore them? If so, is politics and ideology taking precedence over human beings, over troubled and needy kids? That is not acceptable. I would like to offer an alternative. Right? Anything I say here is not meant to demean or any such thing for any person or group. I propose that there is a way, way to eliminate politics and focus on kids. That's right. Eliminate politics and focus on kids, whatever their need may be. Let's eliminate, quote, safe spaces. I'm serious. And instead, focus on teachers' classrooms and administrators' offices where any kid who needs help can get help for whatever the reason. Can we envision a school environment in which teachers and administration, administrators could voluntarily. Place an Arrowhead A on their door, as has, has been suggested by board members and community, community members. Can we envision that? I would suggest an Arrowhead A and four simple words. Come in, hang out, or come in, you're welcome. This would not be a, quote, safe space, rather it is simply Mr. Bolt's office, Ms. Peridovsky's office. Ms. Gordon's office, Mrs. Smith's office, Mr. Kerr's office, this Coraggio's classroom, this Herman's classroom. That's all, nothing more than that. Troubled kids are not a surprise to these experienced professionals. If we were to look at this issue in such a way, what would we have done? We've removed the politics. We've removed the buzzwords. We've removed the string of letters. We focused on genuine needs of real kids at Arrowhead High School. We've enlisted any staff who choose to participate in addressing our bullying problem, bullying for any reason. We've taken a substantial step towards solving, for improving rather, the well-being of the kids. For whom our community holds us responsible. I recommend that we reconsider this policy and particularly section A one D. And any other sections of proposal as needed to achieve the environment just described. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. And I, I appreciate you bringing out. What if, what if had, had been discussed at one point, I think there were a number of different ideas standing off because. The policy again is just then, it's the policy, uh, where the rubber really gets the rubber is in the execution. So the board has already committed to work very closely with the administration to make sure that the policy itself will be implemented in the best way possible. And given that, um, a number of, uh, ideas again that surfaced in the past, uh, Mr. Evers. Uh, brought something to, uh, the policy committee and perhaps you won't even share that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I, I had this idea, um, and then a community member actually presented this last month as an idea as well, but, uh. Oddly, I don't, I don't want to take credit for it, but, um, also won't say that at work one day I started to create some sample stickers. That to me would be Arrowhead endorsed, not endorsed by Listen or any other activist or political group or whatever. Um, affiliation may, may be, would actually be something, um, created by and, and supported by Arrowhead. And just some simple, um, statements, uh, but with your, your point Craig on, on A. And some of the, just the, the ones that I came up with, uh, with the Arrowhead logo. And, uh, one of them saying, we are one, all, or all are welcome as well as one team. And there's others that obviously could be created, um, but to really piggyback off of what one of the community members, um, said. Or recommended last month during, um, during the board meeting. So there's obviously other things that could be said and that all need to be the same, uh, all can be the same in context or same in purpose. Uh, what may be slightly different words that, that may, um, connect with, uh, various people depending, um. On, because we all understand that people connect on different levels of different, different things that we need for them. Uh, but that, that is, that is one where I, I think it is more inclusive and collaborative for everyone. None of those statements or the backgrounds of the sticker, uh, suggest that it is no purposeful for one group versus the other. As well as it may create that level of community. Uh, so that's, that's been in the works for a little over a month, um, because it was talked about. Uh, in this, again, in this meeting a month ago, but, uh, even just a few days prior to that, some of this was in the works and then samples. Uh, were made but not yet shared or distributed just because, uh, we're still kind of in this deliberation phase. Couple of other things that I, I think, um, we should consider is, and it was, uh, again addressed by another community member earlier. And I appreciate her comments, um, around, um, whether it's a result of the absence of a policy. Um, things happen, um, and statements kind of around, things shouldn't have gotten to the point where they are that we now need a policy to reverse it. So there's a, a lot of things to consider there in my opinion, um, and I, and I would challenge everyone to think about in their current places of work. No matter where they work, or even if you're in your own business. Many cases, I would say, if not all cases, but I know there's anomalies, you are not free to post anything that you want to post. There are company policies around it. There's corporate policies around it. Even, even companies that have a strong D and I focus, they still do not allow anyone to post whatever they feel like posting. So again, in the absence of a policy, it allows anyone to currently post or hang or just show or distribute. Anything that they want to, right or wrong, may agree with it or not on whatever is being displayed or posted. And in the case of not having a policy, I believe as a board member, that puts Arrowhead at greater risk. Because what is posted is also then endorsed and supported by the institution and where it is hung. I would also ask, have you ever seen anyone free to post anything on state grounds, a state Capitol, a state park? A, the state legislation building, the local DMV? Are you allowed to post anything that you want just as a citizen or even a, an employee of that facility? And I would challenge you that you are not allowed to do so. I guarantee, I haven't researched it yet, but I would guarantee that they have policy around who can and who has authority to post. So it goes back to, I think, a statement Kim made earlier that in the absence of a policy, we don't have any grounds to make sure. That we can remain free or excluded from people being able to post at will anything that they want. I firmly believe if we had a Arrowhead created sticker or sign. That said something like safe space or potentially even safe space, uh, exactly, that it wouldn't have raised a single eyebrow. Uh, because it was a Arrowhead endorsed, an Arrowhead created, and it was a part of the Arrowhead one, um, thought process. The other thing that I, I think should be noted and I debated whether or not to, to say this during, during this portion. Um, but there is one of those stickers right over there on the column. Right behind, uh, where Jeff and Laura are sitting, there's a safe space sticker. It's the one that I think is being talked about. Uh, most frequently, I'm not aware if there's other styles of that or not. But with that sticker in this room, I've been called and other board members and community members have been called a bigot. Uh, apparently I've been threatened now if I vote one way or another on this, to be threatened and humiliated out at restaurants or if they see me in public. And to me, that is proof that, that that sticker in nature does not work. It is the, um, human element of it and the respect for all that does work. And that's what we need to focus on, not the sticker, not where the sticker came from, not who it's posted or who it's intended to support or not. But to me, that sticker didn't help me. I was threatened, called a bigot. Um, I'm, I'm okay with that. I understand and I understand the nature in which the discussion that we are having, but it was, in, in my opinion. It's not the physical asset of a sticker that is meaningful. It's behavior, it's how we treat each other and it's how we hold respect for all. I went a little bit above and beyond the request to show these and. I went a little bit above and beyond the request to show these and, and mention this, but I thought all was important to say.
Can I ask? Can you mention that Adam had conversations with one of the counselors and some of the students?
Oh, so Mr. Fleger, who has our GSA, held a GSA meeting after our last policy meeting. When I talked to him, I had at that time, I said. You know, if this policy goes through, what would be some recommendations of the students in the GSA that they would have for how we could support them? In the absence of safe spaces.
Was there any initial reaction from your, your staff? In terms of this does go, you know, the policy does kick in.
I think that we're looking at how can we help students feel supported that are part of the LGBTQ communities? That found the safe space stickers to be. Useful to them or to help them make, to help them feel more comfortable within ours. That's what the conversations have been around.
Is there any react, I mean, reaction to them in terms of, you know? What to expect? I mean, I'm sure like someone said, it could equate to 100, 200 students coming in this fall. And those, you know, we, we banned stickers. What will? The possible reaction?
Of the student body?
Yes.
I, I don't know. I think that some of the students here have spoken to that and I think some of the students here were probably part of that. Meeting. The, the GSA meeting that was had. Around it. So, and, and please, if I'm not accurate, I think maybe Kat and Chase were at this meeting perhaps and. Let me know if I'm misrepresenting the information. That was, that was shared. So in terms of how to help? Is that what you're?
Yeah.
First of all, the, the, the students said that they feel like a couple of recent policies in the, in the fall and now have singled out the LGBTQ community. And so they would just like to stop being the focal point of, of policy. Second. They felt like that. When teachers had a safe space sticker outside their classroom. They felt like that was going to be a place where if a derogatory comment was said, that it was going to be addressed. Or that it was less likely that a derogatory comment was going to be said within that classroom. That was the feeling of the, the, the students who attended that meeting. When the GSA first started at Arrowhead, I was the first head of the GSA at Arrowhead and the derogatory comments in the hallways and the classrooms have been a. Consistent issue vocalized by our LGBTQ. Community throughout that time. So staff being visible in hallways. Staff, when they hear something, addressing those comments. Is seen as that's a big place for us to go. So having some sort of professional development in the fall. If the policy is to go through and maybe if the policy doesn't go through. Around, these are the terms that if we hear them in our classrooms or in our hallways, we need to address them right away and we have to be expected to address them. And that also means we need to be expected to be out in the hallways during passing time where a lot of these comments are said. That according to this group would help them feel more supported like it's a safer space because the comments, and I think that a lot of our. Alumni and. Current students have spoken to that. And that's right now where we sit is our number one place to go with that. I think. Again, signaling. With some sort of signage that this is a place for all and that all are welcome would be a good. Step in the right direction if the policy were to go through as well. The students spoke out that they feel like not all spaces are equally safe within the classroom or within the school. And I think that feeling would still persist. Even with the new. Signage of stickers, but students need to know these are the people that I can. Go to that are maybe outside our counseling and school site staff, some of the teachers that they just feel like, hey, if I. Need somebody to talk to or I, I just want to say, I'm hearing this. Can you please address in the classroom that that's going to be called?
Thank you.
And I hope I was accurately representing the information from that meeting. Okay, thank you.
May I add two quick points? I guess clarifications. First, there are two of those stickers in this room. Don't know if you noticed or not, and there was one on the front door of the library as you walked in. So it's a safe space for all. When those were. Put out by a school psychologist as any teacher wants these, it was not a political action. There was no intent of political action. The intent was. And we help students. I don't know how many students noticed them, but they've been there since February seven. Was when they were offered of 2022, so about a year and a half almost. I'm not aware of any complaints. So that's just one point, just the timing of it because there was some talk about this might be a new thing. It's about a year and a half.
And I approve. So the question was, can I hand these out? I approved it and I believe that you and I had had conversations. So it was not a, it was a, it was approved in a sense, but if the board would like to work differently. Within a policy or something like that, is that something that will have to change?
I guess my second point is you do have policy related to this, not. Specific to displays, but you have policy 17.4 written in 2011. Just. So 17.4, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's called staff involvement in political activities. Because we don't. We don't do that unless it's a political science class, for instance, and talk about two different parties. But just a couple of little bits of this policy. It talks about no school employees. Shall during school hours for which pay is received and during which a student is present. Shall engage in any activity for the solicitation, promotion, election. Or defeat of any referendum candidate for public office, legislation or political action. And then it goes on to say the same thing about no employee will use classrooms or buildings. For political action, promotion of candidates. And it talks about employees shall not make use of school equipment or materials for. Purpose of election and so forth and political action. So. I just want to make sure people know I don't, I personally, I don't feel like. We've had no policy and things have gone amok. I don't think things have gone amok. This policy. Has a clear direction about political action, which isn't all encompassing of. Policy 335 either, but there is some overlap there.
Well, I have just a quick comment. I think it's kind of a rhetorical question, but I, I find it a good thing that we've only had. Safe space stickers for a year and a half, and I know that this policy as Rick is not just about safe space in your. I'm just wondering how anyone felt safe prior to a year and a half ago. A very new thing. And I guess I'm not looking for an answer, but I, I find that curious.
Are there any other board members that would like to?
I guess I. Excuse me, I, I just have to say I'm saddened by the context of this whole discussion. Absent the banning of safe spaces and some of the. Original drafts of this. Policy and. The items that were discussed have concerned. Those things hadn't happened in the past. This would be a pretty mundane house. Say, schools in charge of what's hung on the walls inside the classroom and what's hung on the wall should be consistent with the curriculum must be taught. Seems like the kind of policy of school board should be adopted. But because of the way that this came to the fore, we've. Offended huge chunks of our. Unity. We've put a group of vulnerable kids on guard and worried that their. Place at Arrowhead is insecure and less safe than it once was. I. Understand and appreciate the. Thoughts of the people who. Are supporting this policy because the idea of equality among. All people is fundamental to our country, is fundamental to our community. And yet there are some people who bear greater burden than others. And as caregivers to our community's children, we look. For those kids who are hurting, the ones that are picked up. And we try to protect them. And I am saddened that the, a tool that's been found that attracts their attention and. Reassures them that they have a place at Arrowhead High School is being taken away. I, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. I'm appreciative of Tim Evers. Stickers and efforts to communicate in a way that is a little more neutral than the stickers that. Been put out before. I know that our staff, Adam Bolt in particular. Is concerned that the message get out that our kids are going to get taken care of, no matter what this policy says. And so. I, I guess the one thing that I would say is that I can't persuade everybody to vote against this, rewrite it and neutralize any of the. Portions of this that deal with safe spaces and maybe even include the part that says we'll. Put up stickers like the ones Tim Evers brought to the table. We don't get to that point today, then I just want the people in this community to know that. We as an organization, the school and staff are going to make sure that those kids are watched, captured, taken care of, and they're going to have safe spaces where they label on the door.
I guess I would add a comment. I appreciate. Tim's setting. Look at safe spaces and I've heard, and you can breathe. There are a lot of positive things, particularly. To perhaps, you know, marginalized groups, it has a special meaning. I think there's another side to safe spaces that I find concerning. And perhaps it's for all the rest of the kids. Who have to on a daily basis, look at something that's identified as a safe space. There are some really notable people. That speak to safe spaces. And, and don't speak favorably of safe spaces. There's a gentleman by the name of Jonathan Pike. If you're not familiar with him, I strongly suggest you pick up one of his books. He's on YouTube all over the place. He wrote a book called The Coddling of the American Home. Jonathan Pike has termed, along with a colleague. Something called anti-fragility. And he strongly suggests. That it's a real detriment to students. To continually be placed in a, in a, in a. Developmental stage in their life. Where they're not getting exposed to things that they really aren't. And that in fact. Just like the immune system. When you place stressors on people, I'm not talking about physical abuse. I'm not talking about sexual abuse. I'm not talking about continued terrible harassment. I'm talking about just day to day stresses. That in fact. When you stress young people, it's good for them to. Because it builds resiliency. It increases self-actualization. And. You actually grow strong. Someone said once. As you think so, you shall be. I think when, when people. Are exposed to things. And they have the opportunity to grow from them. And they learn that they can be resilient. They learn that they can be courageous. They actually do all that. And I do believe that safe spaces are. In fact, a detriment. To, to our culture and to our society. Are there any other board comments?
Do you think that we can collectively as a board commit to looking at something like this? In the future, work with administration on what that might look like to. To help. That, it sounds like very, very similar to what you were saying Craig earlier. Is that? How does that sound to you?
Well, help me understand what you're saying, Randy. Are you suggesting that we go back and revisit this and. Not pass it to receiving, but rather. Take it to the next policy meeting and hash this out. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm, I don't know how the vote will go tonight, but I'm saying no matter which way the vote goes tonight, I think we should look at this in the future. As a policy agenda item. Put it to the top of all this.
I appreciate looking at it again. However, I don't know why we would hop past something that is still. I mean, certainly and in need of improvement. That doesn't make sense to me. It seems to me that that. Gets the cart before the horse. Let's get this done right and get it done right the first time. And I, by the way, I agree in many ways with my colleague Tim. Here, who. Suggested, as I briefly suggested, that there are any number of positives involved in this policy. There are good reasons for some of it. The primary egregious portion, as I've mentioned, is one A one D. And there's. There's a lot, there's other things that are acceptable in my mind. But that portion is not. And maybe a couple of other portions, but. Why wouldn't we go back and address that and figure it out? First and then. Pass a more improved and acceptable policy. That would be my question.
I have something that I'd like to read. I found this in Psychology Today by a psychologist. It's called Safe Spaces Can Be Dangerous. And I'll just read one portion out of it that I found. It kind of goes along with what Kim was saying. Safe spaces let us hide in our comfortable little existence, which is dangerous because they prevent us from growing and changing based with adversity. Creating new neural networks and adapting. And the ability to do just those things is what's kept us alive as a species. The fittest in the competition for survival are those that can adapt in order to face challenges and overcome them.
Amy, may I ask if that was written about adolescence?
It was actually college.
So we're talking about younger people than that here who are still in formation.
That's true, yes. Although I do agree with the speaker who spoke about how this policy should have been placed earlier and this never should have happened to gotten to this point. Like Kim or Tim reference to. The safe space stickers came from an outside group, this Glitza. And they're kind of promoting the LGBTQ agenda. It's kind of a liberal organization. So that got into our school. They also send schools free books promoting same thing. And they do. I have a quote from one of the people who is the head of Listen right now. This Melanie Willingham Jaggers. She's the new executive director of Listen. She says. LGBTQ and young people in schools and their student groups like GSAs have always been the hub, kind of the breeding ground, the soil from which these sparks of activism come up. So I consider that political. And if we want to get away from politics seeping into our schools, whether it's left or right. I think we need to address what we have right now and get rid of the safe space stickers. Get rid of, if we have a blue line plague, we were talking about that too. Both sides, nothing. We just focus on education.
The American plague, great. The state plague of Wisconsin, great, but we just focus on education and not promoting any ideology in our schools, whether it's left or right.
I think those safe states, safe space stickers did solve a problem that leads from the kids that we hear heard from tonight and also, you know, with both ads before too.
So it's true, but those safe space stickers are a rainbow and they identify one certain group. What about the kids who are overweight and need a safe place to go? They're getting picked on because they're fat. Or if you're too skinny, or if you do wear glasses, that's so divisive. It's just one little group that you've got a safe space sticker for. It's not talking to other people who are having the same issues. We should focus on making our school more of a safe space for everybody with those stickers that Tim has shown us. Something promoting the school itself, that our school is a safe space. And we work more and more with the teachers standing in the hallways, watching kids go back and forth, making sure no one is harassed. You know, we always hear about the bullying, 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 and even when we were talking about the bullying before, no, nobody mentioned the safe space stickers at all, like they were helping until we brought this up that, oh, maybe, you know, they shouldn't be in our schools right now. No one even mentioned them. So if they were helping with the bullying or whatever, why wasn't that brought up before?
Maybe I, I tried to address what you just said in my little remarks. I'll reiterate just one sentence or two. If a kid gets bullied or abused because he or she wears unusual clothing, wears odd-looking glasses, needs a urinate, can't speak clearly, has a deformed arm, crooked teeth. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
So, so what I'm trying to suggest is that we don't distinguish between bullying for this reason, that reason, and the other reason.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. These stickers are perfect.
And I'm agreeing with Tim. I suggested that as well. Let's put up an Arrowhead A. Come in and hang out, whatever. Okay, so the problem that still exists though, if we move this policy forward, is this section A1D that denies reality. It claims that there are, that every place should be safe. Well, it's not safe. Let's go back and rework this so that it makes sense and aligns with what is real.
So, but I, I think I don't want to misspeak. So hopefully there's folks that can remember this potentially more accurately than me. It's directly in the minutes from the policy meeting, and I don't recall if it was in the closed portion or both. Um, and I admittedly, I did have to drop out of the open portion of the policy meeting early. But I thought we spent a little bit of time talking with our legal counsel specifically around the wording of safe space. And what potential legal ramifications there are when we have certain areas within the school designated as safe. That indirectly and therefore can be proven to be directly implicates that the other areas in the school are not safe. So we have two issues that come and arise out of identifying a room as a safe space. What happens if someone perceives themselves to be unsafe in that room that is designated as safe? As well as what happens to, to, what happens in the case of someone who is now deemed to be unsafe in a room that is not marked? We are open to what I would consider risk or legal ramifications at a minimum by having designation space within a school or, or any facility as one room is safer than the other. I totally agree with the notion and concept that what, what these would do, if in capturing the same intent of what the original sticker is, is trying to create by removing the word or the words safe space. Safe and safety has multiple meanings that can be taken out of context and potentially used against us in multiple situations. So I, I believe we, we, we got to take out the fact that the original stickers that, that we're talking about have the words safe space. The policy does not explicitly say those stickers. It just has in quotations, will not have safe space. And I believe that was there with the intention of keeping the school um from legal ramifications of one room is safe, the other one doesn't have the sticker, so it is not. So I think there is merit in having one D in here.
To, to, may I just respond to that and say that I believe your recollection is correct from the attorney? Which is why in my remarks, I tried to say, let's not have safe spaces. Let's not use that terminology. We could just do what you suggested.
And all this is saying is that we won't use that terminology. But that's all this is saying. The way I'm reading, I could be interpreting it wrong, but that's what one D is explicitly saying. And you guys are saying the same thing.
You are, thank you.
Well, perhaps we are, Brandon, but it seems to me that there is an assumption here, if not an outright statement, that the school is safe everywhere for everybody. And that's just not true. That, that needs to be reworked.
The other piece to note, the other piece that Bob Butler mentioned in his legal analysis of this was having a safe space with a teacher that may not be trained properly in a crisis situation would also put us at risk if they handle the crisis situation improperly. So that, just to add to your legal context, that was another thing that Bob Butler brought up.
Brandon, I, I heard that too, and I think that's, that is a good, also a valid recollection, and I have the same recollection. And my comment to that would be, if there are concerns about teachers not being qualified to interact with kids regarding bullying or similar issues, then I'm sure there's a professional development opportunity that could be made available to them if they haven't been through multiple ones already. So let's, let's trade our teachers then.
Well, I think that's what we're saying with this type of stuff, you know, depending on the type of room and what kind of training we want to give our teachers from a professional development standpoint, I think we can do better. That's what, I think we're all speaking the same thing here. We, we can do better than just putting that up on the wall. We can, we can work towards what you just said here by training teachers better to handle certain situations.
Well, then let's include that in our policy.
I, I would think that that belongs in the procedural portion.
I think that's, I think we're missing the point. I think there's policy and there's procedure. And, and I, I think the things that are being raised right now really go to the implementation of the policy itself. The policy, we arrived at the policy through consultation with our attorney. Um, I'm uncomfortable changing language at this point. We were fully advised. It's a good policy. These ideas can, can go towards discussions we entertain with administrations towards in implementation of the policy.
And we focus on bullying for all. Fighting against bullying, just that seemed to be the people this year for everybody. Teach people how to treat, treat everyone else with respect.
But why would we implement a policy without having discussed it thoroughly and looking at procedures that are tied to it? These, these things go hand in glove. And should be considered hand in glove simultaneously. Well, what's the big hurry here? Why can't we discuss this early?
Well, we've had two policy meetings.
I'm not satisfied, because I don't know if everyone else here is.
One part that I would add is, one, it was recommended from our legal team to put a policy in place. Uh, so I mean, that does pass away on us. And then second, there's been other times when we have passed policy and the procedure gets written after. It's not always been, I understand.
I'm not against having a policy in place. I just want it to be a good policy, a well thought-through, considered policy. Look at it one more time on a subject of this magnitude and this much controversy. It cannot hurt us.
And again, I think, you know, we've, we've had two policy meetings on it. Uh, the latter one was with consultation with our attorney. We're pretty comfortable with how we've been advised. Language is not inclined to shift that much. It's his language.
I disagree with you. And we certainly hadn't asked in the inquiry their requirement or promoting sorts of stickers. They, and where, and there was some steps in policy. Both in need of more directly expressed support for our particular students who were being put upon by the changes to our policy. And, and choose to make those changes and at the same time say we embrace them as our students and we care for them like we would any other. And so why not write into the policy and explain why we're including our requirement or some sort of promotional idea of using those stickers. Welcome, welcoming us.
I think the policies that we have in place are written for all students in the school. They impact everybody. I don't know any other policy that we have, and maybe I stand correct. I don't know another policy where we carve out and make exceptions for this. And we should write into a policy something for this. We're not looking in categories and boxes. We're trying to devise policy that's appropriate for everyone. And then on the implementation side of things, that there are things that we do to implement and, 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 and make things work smoothly. We work at that, at that. With signal to administration, our willingness to, to, to work together to be able to work with additional strategies perhaps here towards particular groups. It should not be part of policy.
Oh, it's clearly part of policy language, but most discussions are and are very negative. I have to say, I deeply regret the process by which, what we have now been that was purely picking on targets and uh, sending the message that this policy is intended to be directed at particular elements first.
Based on that last statement, Tim, I, I want to say that in, in my thought process for this policy, I, I do not agree with that last statement for myself. I am not looking at it and targeting any member of our student body, whether as an individual or a group. I am looking at it from a collective standpoint as Arrowhead all in one. So I, I do not agree with that for myself.
I don't agree with that for myself. Nor do I.
I don't agree with it either. I agree with it.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Right now on the floor here. But there's more discussion. We can keep going, but it seems like it's not the board.
So we have a motion in a second. I think we'll take a vote. I'd like to do a roll call vote. The vote is for the approval of policy three through five. Displays and postings in student environments. Board member Evers, what is your vote?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm opposed. I'm opposed. Opposed.
Mr. Ferris?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well. The motion is approved. Thank you to the board.
Thank you. There's a few other just minor things that I'd like to add. I was going to start with the follow-up policy. Uh, the first one, I'd like the chair of the day board that all, that were including the initial draft administration to remove immediately, which makes the safe space stickers. But are there any thinking that's not related? And I have a, we vote. We do a roll call vote on that.
I couldn't go where that was.
I also didn't hear it. Well, from the summary that I heard was a directive to vote on a directive to administration to immediately remove the safe place stickers, anything related to uh, race, politics, et cetera. I just would want to encourage the board procedurally. I believe you should be noticing anything you're going to vote on, and so we shouldn't vote. And what Chris is suggesting, I personally, I think that's part of a well-needed rich discussion on what does implementation look like? Because to say, direct us to remove anything related to closer to say, remove anything related to different races. I, I think we would need clarification. Does that mean nationalities too, and Spanish and follow them, so? And so I, I feel like that's a great discussion to have for more detail.
Can I adjust procedure? Your next policy meeting is July twenty seventh. Is that something to discuss because students will be, you know? But do you have a month for a week?
I, I think that's something that Chairman Ferris can certainly look at the agenda for that in the meeting and tie it up here. Um, I, I appreciate your comments, Lawrence, and, and I agree. Uh, I think what this thing suggested really goes towards the implementation portion of the policy. Um, it's, it's directives and they, all of them, I think they'll require a lot of robust discussion between board members and the administration team. Is there anything, anything further on policy?
Uh, yeah, that's, 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 that's all. It's a couple of quick comments on some things that were brought up earlier in the meeting. Uh, on the cover of the disclaimer with regard to, uh, let's see. Thought we should have a future, a group discussion with regards to remote participation. Howard did mention that that should be a feature policy. Uh, the question as well, so we have that in place. It's a great idea. Uh, but that will be added. It's not going to work. Um, and, and finally, uh, Craig's point, the average point, yeah, we'll have, uh, continue to follow up with regards to, uh, the next step on, uh, you know, that potential well, I don't know.
Okay, uh, so our next meeting date, as was mentioned, is July twenty seventh for next up is Chairperson with three of them.
Um, discussion in action on a repeat, but not annual student trip to Orlando, Florida by Arrowhead Broadway Company. I don't think we discussed this at our last meeting, so can you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, Grace Gustavo proposing a field trip from May twenty second through the twenty sixth for voluntarily for the Broadway company. Um, performances would be involved, workshops would be involved. They get some back behind the scenes uh, opportunities uh, with, with performance performers at Disney World. They've taken this trip before. They typically done it in February, but because musical theater nights is taking place later this year, they pushed it off into May. We talked about an administrative thing we thought we could support up here.
It looks really nice. Mrs. May have mentioned.
Mrs. May have mentioned.
Twenty four. Thank you for mentioning that.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure we have it updated.
Not retroactively. Make sure Gustavo changes that, but yes.
Motion to approve. Any more discussion?
All in favor, vote aye. Motion is for the Orlando Florida trip.
And then what's coming up next for us is our scheduled workshop on July twenty fourth, four to eight P M. I do believe in the boardroom. Correct. And then after that, I do believe the next curriculum committee meeting will be August twenty fourth. That's all I have.
Uh, co-chairpersons, Evers and vocal times, sign us in.
Sure, I'll I'll start. Okay, so our our next meeting will be July twenty first. It's a Friday, six forty five A M. We have a very full agenda. Thanks, Jeff, for sending that quick reply. Totally agree with everything on there, Laura. I agree with your note as well. Good, good catch. Thank you. So please, please attend. And as I stated in the last meeting, we now have a set schedule for finance and legislation meetings. And one of the agenda items that I think is very critical that we'll discuss in the meeting on the twenty first is establishing that set cadence of meeting topics in those monthly meetings. Obviously, we'll we'll continue to add ad hoc topics into that as needed, but I would like a very set cadence and rhythm to what we're going to be doing in finance and legislation. So looking forward to the next meeting.
All right, legislation wise, we did get a email back from our representative, Chris. Jeff put together a wonderful talking points to go back and question some of the numbers that he brought forward us to ask maybe where his numbers came from versus what we were saying. So we'll see if we get a response back or what that is. So keep everyone posted. And then secondly, we will be having a discussion point coming up at the next meeting on equity and funding. They did reach out about we potentially being on their steering committee, but that would mean that we would have to join as. So I'd like to have a robust conversation about that as well.
Just one question. You said, Chris, you met Kapanga?
Yes.
I've got a couple of emails up to him directly just for me as well, asking for a lot of the math and and other things behind that as well.
Yeah, Jeff actually wrote a.
I know where the numbers are from. I explained. I explained where his numbers came.
See the original email where he said our students were getting sixteen thousand plus. And I was, what? What are you talking about?
When you add in a one time, two million dollar sale of land, that helps a lot.
Right. Well, I was just glad that you were back to me and he said that. So we'd even know that that was an issue, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let him know where those numbers came from.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, next up is Chairperson.
Yes, our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August the third. So we'll have two superintendents there for our meeting. So Laura. Some exciting stuff there, but also just a reminder, I sent an email last week saying that we're with Adam Curse Coordination. Thank you so much that we're going to have a little road trip looking at four up to four different schools. Looking at from a building and ground perspective. And we'll be sharing that exact itinerary, but I think the game plan is leaving here at seven, seven A M.
Yeah, arrive at, yeah, arrive here around seven A M. For any board members who would like to go, departure around seven fifteen. Daryl and I have been in contact and just recently kind of finished that conversation tonight for schools. We kind of thought quality of time over quantity of schools, just so that you can get a full dose of what has occurred in those schools and very different situations in each school to observe and be exposed to. So it'll be a good trip. We'll hitch up the camper and we hope to be back by three to three thirty at the latest.
Next, next Wednesday.
Wednesday nineteenth.
Away from today.
I'll send out further details, an actual document with where we're going, what we'll be looking at, those sort of things to hopefully by tomorrow. If not right at the latest.
How how late? Do you need to know shirt was attended?
We'll have two vans ready already booked. So, yeah.
Things around second through the entire day, but.
Yeah, we'll have a breakout of each of the schools that we're going to. So if you can't commit to the full day, but maybe you can commit to the majority.
Sure.
Or just the afternoon, you'll see where we'll be at.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Chairman.
We had a meeting on June thirteenth and a involved conversation about the process of wrapping up our series of boardmanship seminars. The I think him and I have some follow up conversation. I think I'll relax on my emails and so I'll talk later. But the word for bringing that to an end and probably more detailed way at the next personnel committee meeting in the August. We did visit the topic that has surfaced a couple of times, but identifying a established seat or two on this board for students and the consensus of the committee was that we aren't interested in limiting the views of the students to one or two, if I could hear from as many of them as possible. And so that idea was passed over and that brought forward the board, obviously. And then we did agree to set a standing agenda item to continue our discussion about making Arrowhead as inviting a place as possible for personnel attracting and retaining for the staff. That was up for the old session.
Thank you very much. The reports, Wasby, I did hear from Brett Hyde, who reached out requesting representation of a communion high school district, the Wasby Policy Organizations Committee. There and I kind of went back and forth. I think she might be involved in some things upcoming. So I will serve as representative in the time those committees that are scheduled for September, I remember January. Anything from Mr. Everson's?
So still. I don't want to back. We need some light out. No.
Okay, well, we got a new business annual approval required reports and qualifications. Discussion and annual action to accept the school safety.
Take the motion to accept the school safety bills report.
And discussion. In a motion in a second to approve the school safety bill report, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and annual action takes up its inclusion in the screen report.
I'll make the motion to accept this inclusion this week. A second.
Further discussion?
We hear a little. What we're seeing.
Yeah. The majority of the numbers in all the columns have primarily aside from the nineteen and twenty school year, we had three different instances. Most of it's for one student was Mr. Holmes. And as that student got closer to graduation, we were pushing more out of the comfort zone. We would find the need for restraint as the student would escalate. The second student involved was the first time this year where we were protecting the student from an embarrassed more embarrassing situation than what they were getting themselves into. Handled very well by our career professionals in that situation, our special defensive features and Ms. Portman did a good job of clearing out what rather large congestion space for students to provide that student privacy while we got the situation. You feel good about reporting of that? Yeah, so the one of the students that accounts for most of these, if you look at eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, was here, but we were not trying to get as much out of that student as we increased toward the time of aging out and graduating from from school. So I know that there's a direct correlation to us pushing up. So families are contacted immediately after each situation. Through shown video of the incidents when requested. I expect the numbers to go down this year back to where we typically are, which means zero and one. And the nineteen twenty school year were due to lease involvement, but some unwrathy behavior of students that we don't typically.
Washington through in a second. So all in favor of approving the suspicion there was breaking the fourth. Say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Discussion and annual action and adopting academic standards.
Make a motion to approve the academic standard.
A second.
Further discussion? All in all in favor of approving the extended? Vote aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and annual action to accept the drug testing report.
Make a motion to accept the drug testing report.
One second.
Can I jump in? There is a typo and I want you to be aware before you approve it. In the South Campus results, it's accurately noted of fourteen. But the six percent should read sixteen percent.
Thank you. I was going to ask that that question as well, but I have one additional because I was looking at that math as well, but I noticed in all other quadrants where we're summing and doing the total and averages, we we add both the nicotine and T H C. It looks like, but in that one, it's only capturing the nicotine. Should that really be fourteen or should it be fourteen plus the eight? Or some of those were captured by nicotine and T H C in the same test.
Right, I believe so. And I could double check that with our South Campus associate principal, but I believe that was sometimes it's nicotine, sometimes it's T H C and sometimes it's that combination, same incidence. It's not like vaping and pot or something. It's all vaping.
I have a question about the cost. Is this like a fixed cost or does it go up as you test more?
You want to explain the cost of testing.
Is it a fixed cost or does it go up as you test more students?
Well, the most the cost is creating the random list. When they have to move seniors and move the sophomores to the North Campus and bring in the freshmen. They never charged for that until two years ago and now this year. And so I I'm talking with the guy on that contract and asked when that contract changed. I had an old contract to to show me where that that was compared to where it is now. They can't find the old contract. I don't have either. So we're going to come up with a new solution and that is we're going to create our own lists. We have a randomization process we can use and we don't have to pay the almost six thousand dollars for them to generate this list. So that'll break it down. So and then the monthly costs will be more in line with what we have been paying before this list thing came up.
And so if we test more, it does go up. There's a per test or per pupil charge in addition to these processing fees. So this was a first year flip that drew our attention to it. It would go back down. Now, right now, our policy, board policy refers to, I believe it's ten students from each building per month is the typical number of students. This board could decide to change policy and do twenty students per building or five students per building if you wanted to do that. It could save costs. Or to decide not to do it at all. We have found it to be its key purpose is pro act. It's not about catching students doing something bad. In fact, the policy says if we catch through a random drug test, the students are not suspended or picked out of school. It's there's whole curricular consequences and then it goes into our normal system of referring the student for help. The parents are obviously notified that. So it's not meant to be mutually punitive. It's meant to be proactive and kids know if I'm participating in any co-curricular, if I choose to park at school, it's those optional things. My name is in that randomizer.
Be based off of that can be proactive, which is which is fantastic. A notable jump in the ninth and tenth grade. You're you're over here comparison. Did you do anything, not not with the ones that were randomly tested, but anything else to the broader student population and parent population with the ninth and tenth graders to make them aware, hey, ask ask your students. Deliberately ask your student because we noticed the higher trend in random, random and tested to see if we can be a little more proactive and maybe curb that. So that same trend doesn't carry into eleven to twelve.
Yeah, we haven't yet done anything that deliberate that specific. I think they our students received obviously lessons throughout our system and programming, but this is a piece of what we shared with you two months ago, I think, when we presented to the board. There were some unique upticks and choices by our students this year, mainly our younger students who are working on many different approaches to that. All behavioral choices. And then this is one snapshot of that, the bullying, the just immaturity, the the grades, academic performance, those kind of things. So it's a it's a bigger challenge in front of us than than just this, but communication to families is definitely something that will most likely come out in conversations.
And just just from a data point of one from a recent graduate from eighth grade or promotion from eighth grade will be a freshman next year. The class that is or what graduated with will be equal to challenging.
Sure.
In this regard, so be great if we could curb curb that a bit.
I'm wondering Adam, if this if this data is shared with the K grades. So that they kind of have a handle on what we're seeing when the kids arrive in ninth grade, whether or not there's anything that they should begin tracking up, suggesting that they should be doing kind of track, but whether there's anything that, you know, might be warranted a little earlier on.
Yeah, I don't know that we share this data.
Yeah, there's some years where I have, but not on a regular basis. I can share with the board until those couple of COVID years came where there wasn't a lot of field trips, things going on. We had a student group that actually traveled to the other, to the K A schools and for some, that was very impactful to hear from the older Arrowhead kids that it's not cool to pay. And in fact, we got national attention on Good Morning America for for doing that. Did we see the numbers improve? So a one time thing for my Arrowhead student, it might have been more advantageous for our students to have that leadership role than it was for sitting for half an hour.
I can say that we did that with Karen or those parents group. She still had it. And I think it was actually more for the parents that were in the room. for the parents that were in the room that attended with it, just to hear how they were using, what devices it looked like, what should you look for. I found that more interesting maybe than what care.
Do we see any?
Yeah, we've done those presentations.
This pretty teach up the room. Do we see any trends with any of the K grade schools with, either this topic or behavioral? She was meaning, do, do any K grade schools produce different results, or it seems like it's classes, more specific classes, so there's one class not in, not in the school that Tim is referencing, uh, but another one that had a rash in this as well, that will become campus freshman, uh, as well, um. And then that's what we hear from the counselors, um, of the feeder schools, if they're presenting the classes to our counselors is just as a whole, what they've seen from these classes, sometimes, uh, Richmond might have a class that is more into neat behaviors than other years, and sometimes it's North Lake, and, uh, just, i- i- it switches back and forth, sometimes like across the board, there is like great, great classes coming through altogether, um, but there, they tell us more about the problems that are coming up, um. Adam was just asking, do we have a report back down at those meetings, and the answer is no, we typically, um, they'll ask us like, how are the, like, um, how are the classes doing, but we don't give like that specific data back, so some of them we, we can't implement, uh, it's more concentrated on, or we I know that, uh, there is a disconnect in my role anyway, in terms of the engagement and behavior, behavior conversations, but I know this year I received two phone calls from two different schools asking for essentially procedural practices that we would do, because they're not used to it, they haven't handled situations that they're handling now. Um, and so that, I mean, that's anecdotal, but, um, but when, whenever, whenever receiving calls on how you can handle this at the high school, because we don't usually have to handle this, it's yeah, might, it might be part of it, right, if I'm getting caught.
Any, any correlation to, uh, we'd have to go back historically, but, uh, the, the level of T U C findings within those classes and how their achievement um, achievement is for that year, or their, um, growth rate at Arrowhead relative to trend of T H C probably.
For a full copper, no, uh, too, too large a student.
Yeah, to me, the most alarming one is the jump from one to eight on the T H C. The, the nicotine one, not that I wanna feed on it, but with my head around that a little bit, the T H C was.
Yeah. Unfortunately. It's, it's so much easier to access for students now, there, I mean, there isn't marijuana as we knew it, right?
Yeah.
It is all. When I learned about it.
Secondhand.
Everybody's sitting by here. As we saw in books, uh, the, uh, I want to be clear though, too, that you can actually purchase, uh, cartridges now that have a legal, uh, form of T H C in it, but that we still consider a, a, a variation of it, and, and would identify it as T H C, and so does, uh, law enforcement, so the fact that a, a kid or brother of a kid can go buy that at the citgo, you know, can, um, is changing.
And isn't it more, or it's different being manufactured, it's, it's not from what I read about pot before, you know, it's not unique or whatever, as it was years ago. But isn't it more damaging though, because it's more chemically?
Yeah, that's the, which is bad for it, it's great, exactly, yep, uh, and, and that conversation happens every time we have one of these, I, I give, um, Ms. Gordon, Ms. Redd, I'll give a lot of credit, because they, they do try to emphasize the impact they're having on their own bodies and development, and those kind of things, the kids don't know. When you sit, you know, when you sit across the table from a kid who's big into working out, and you tell him the effect he's having on his body, and he's like, really? You know, like those kind of conversations, um, and they're taught it, but until they're caught and have registers and it impacts them, it doesn't doesn't take a decision, so.
Anything else around, uh, the random drugs? If not, we'll run to the vote, uh, all in favor of? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries random drug testing.
Assuming the typos.
Yes. So what's on the public?
Future agenda items.
So do we just have the annual meeting in the office, no regular board meeting?
So if I can jump in, usually there have been one or two, a couple of years where, uh, regular reading has been completely skipped. More often in my years here, we've had a brief, uh, regular board meeting at about six o'clock in the, uh, North Campus Community Room, so that conference room up there for thirty to forty minutes, just to approve hires, uh, anything that's timely, so it isn't the typical schedule. We have the agenda that looks the same, but there's very few things on that. I would recommend you do, you what do I say, you do that, because in state statute, it says every school, school board should have a regular board meeting a month. Now, I don't know for sure that an annual meeting counts as a regular school board meeting.
And I didn't know with a regular board meeting, you have to have citizen's contracts to, in your annual.
Annual meeting you have sort of be this floor, it's really a meeting of the community. You know, usually your board meeting is a board meeting, a community listening and observing, annual meeting. It's always run similarly, it's a meeting of the community, so people can bring up, and your business item, or whole business, I want more information about.
But for the regular board meeting, monthly board, with the citizen count. Item there, or we get, you know, that happen since we have.
Yeah, it's part of the regular agenda. But our rules for that say the board president can fault that at any time, so our board president can say we faulting it because you're supposed to. It can be abbreviated.
Right, okay.
For you. And typically in August, there are, there are hires uh, that would be good to approve for even just the build list, some of those regular items are probably better to happen rather than waiting to.
But in any case, we should know for our personal calendars where our meetings are going to.
Absolutely, and for what it's worth, I am to have a, uh, conversation with, uh, so I'll kind of check in with him as well. Uh, and once that's, we'll only want to establish on that.
Thank you.
Maybe one, one last comment, uh, because Laura, you sent it out ahead of time, but thanks to Brian for sending out the, the achievement file, a lot of good stuff there, so that should be noted.
Yeah, our co-curricular, the students, coaches, club advisors, Brian, his department, they just do a brain shot of uh, lots of success, but probably more importantly, just lots of opportunities and the life skills and programs are quite amazing. Uh, the, the documents, a couple of ages long, I emailed them a couple of days ago, but there are some links that people want to go away and depth, you can, yeah, it could turn into a fifty page doc.
But I, I didn't, I didn't reply or respond, but if you guys can pass along the appreciation and gratitude, and, and well done.
For some reason, I couldn't get into that link, I had to be granted permission. Yes, and I saw that, so one of the links is corrected already. The other link will still come up with a goofy, goofy message, but I saw a hard copy of it or, or something, and.
I was granted, half I asked.
The one link I would highly encourage is the link that talks about the student, uh, community service. To pop that open, and there's photos and just the lists of every club, classes, every athletic team, all the volunteerism that's happened. I just love that about her.
Okay, if there are no other future agenda items, uh, as I motion to adjourn, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.